On the border, the regular meeting of the Forest Hills School Administration Board of Education on Monday, June 20th. How will the president please call for?
Mr. Dussinger, is there a room here?
Here.
And I think Tony Polan is in Temple, Florida, so there are three or five of us tonight. Please rise for the flag leaders.
Our flag leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Is there a question?
Mr. Dussinger?
Yes.
Is there a question?
Does anybody have any corrections on any of the minutes, the four sets of minutes that were not approved? Corrections or changes? With that, we have a motion to approve all four sets of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the Business Advisory Committee of May 12, 2016, the special meeting of May 16, 2016, the minutes of the Communications and Policy Committee meeting of May 16, 2016, and the regular meeting of May 23, 2016.
Second.
Is there a question?
Yes.
Yes. Correspondents? Any correspondence from the superintendent?
I do. I have one from the State Board of Education. It says, "Ohio's State Board of Education is pleased to send you the attached letter recognizing your school as one of its first annual All-A Award winners. Receiving As on every measure of school performance in the 2014-15 School Report Card shows the commitment you and your staff have made to providing high-quality education to students from every background and every ability level. And it is my honor, I'm going to ask Mr. Spencer if he would please come up to the podium on behalf of the Ohio State Board of Education to send us some information."
In case people were wondering, I actually did go look at Anderson. They were one factor away from making it by just a few percentage points, so they were not quite there, but almost. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Spencer.
Public commentary. This is a meeting of Board of Education called Public and the Purpose of Meeting. Business is not considered public when it is meeting. Board meetings provide an appropriate for district residents and staff members to draw discussions related to business activity. Residents are welcome to address Board of Education's comments and opinions, suggestions, concerns through the public commentary section of the meeting. To do so, individuals should complete a public participation sheet available at the entrance of the meeting room and submit the sheet to the secretary at the table by the entrance. During the public commentary section of the board meeting, residents have submitted public participation sheets to be invited to the podium. Responses and questions posed by the speaker will generally be followed by superintendent pressures that does need within five business days. Now, if a question or comment is not addressed during the meeting, please note this does not indicate a lack of interest or a desire to gather much information as possible. If you would prefer to share your comments or concerns with the Board of Education or do not wish to speak at a meeting, feel free to email the board at So far, I have no cards.
Next up, commendations and recognitions. First one is the NSPRA recognition.
Yes. The National School Public Relations Association passes out or acknowledges awards each year. It's called the Mark of Distinction Award. And Erica Daggett, who is our school communications coordinator, is the president of the Ohio School Public Relations Association. And Erica and her work has brought to the state of Ohio a special award for professional development in public relations and skill building. So across the state of Ohio, thanks to Erica and the team that she works with at OHSPRA, they received the national award. And it speaks highly of her leadership in the state, and we're glad that she's affiliated with our school district in the many things that she does within our organization to increase our communication. So we wanted to acknowledge that she received that. And in the same acknowledgement, I would also like to let you know that Erica has been chosen to present at the Ohio Capitol Conference, which is one of the most important conferences of the school year for public education. And that will happen in Columbus, Ohio this coming November. And Erica will be speaking on what parents want in school communications. She will be providing that information across the state of Ohio. As communities diversifying, knowing what parents expect from school communications and how to best reach them can be challenging. Forest Hills will offer tips, Erica Daggett will offer tips, on improving outreach to families, communicating to different generations, and best practices for addressing what parents say they want from school communicators. So on both of these issues tonight, I would like to congratulate Erica, who is in the room with us right now. And I want to thank you for all that you do for us to make sure that our communication is at high level and what you're doing across the state. And I'd like to congratulate you, humbled with your name. Thank you.
I have two. The Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators have recognized Wilson Elementary as a 2015-16 Hall of Fame School. I think we mentioned that last month. Representative Tom Breitman's office dropped off a certificate of recognition for Wilson Elementary. He was planning on being here this evening, but had some other meeting come up. He was not able to be with us this evening. And we have a actually very nice certificate from the House of Representatives. It looks like it's actually honestly signed by Tom Breitman and Speaker of the Ohio House of Representatives, Cooper A. Rosenberg. I'm not able to read the whole thing, but I will at least read the first paragraph. "On behalf of the members of the House of Representatives, the 131st General Assembly of Ohio, we are pleased to extend special recognition to Wilson Elementary School for being selected as a 2016 Hall of Fame School by the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators." Mr. Buck, if you'd like to come up and see this certificate? Congratulations. And while we're recognizing people, Mr. Mike Broadwater was elected by the membership of the Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators, OASSA, to serve as president-elect for the 2016-17 school year. In his position, Mr. Rob Broadwater, who previously served as the Anderson High School principal and the OASSA Zone 2 director, will collaborate with the president of OASA to provide professional development to organization members, which includes administrators of middle schools, high schools, and district senate offices across the state. Mike will also work to influence legislation and state curricular initiatives. In 2017-18, Mike will serve as the president. So we're proud to have him serve in that capacity. My understanding is he is off somewhere this evening, deserving...
In training for that very opportunity.
So congratulations to Mike. He's always not here. Moving on, public commentary. I have no cards, so we will skip to the next item on the agenda, district updates from the superintendent. Mr. Johnson, sir.
Good evening. I won't take a full-on comment today because I have a fourth kind of going to be going across the building. We haven't been out there until just recently. There's been a lot of stuff going on over the course of the last two weeks. The hair and Sherwood, the gut at the center sections. Mercer looks like a bomb on this one. But it's all by design. What's this grading? Now that we have built like a set of space going on and working every building with the exception of the day going in. Removing Belgium's, trying to stay ahead of their contract. So it's moving furniture out of the storage units, furniture out of the apartment. Stay ahead of the contract. Hide a little part of the garage. Staff, everybody outside, certain floor top. Things come to happen. A great example is Boston, the highest office in the world right now. There's not a single place, four hour place. And they're really into the fourth of July to claim the death warrant. And they couldn't do that height of the experience. Trying to utilize a lot of our student work, portion of summer. How to do this much to ensure that it stays in contract. You know, one of the struggles we've had, a couple of them, I want to make sure that I use my time to see and then put down. A portion of this is that with both buildings, one of the things that we're finding is that we don't have the complete documents. Of course, we got the full plan, we got the contract, contacted several architects to ask people to require full sets of documents and several, that is one of the things we run into. One of the struggles we've had, so one of the interesting things that we had is we were going to completely redo the lower floor, the lower floor merger this summer and put in the new elevator cap. When we went to look examining the pit and putting the new elevator cap, there were the utilities. That's exactly that big building where the utility man made that cap. So we had to step back a bit. So we're looking at some redesigning that, we're still doing all the work that we've been doing, except for the elevator this summer. But we had to kind of reconfigure this, we're going to ramp it up a little left part. Just gotta take the elevator there. That forces spending six figures to relocate the facilities. I believe to the fact, with all due respect to Hamilton County, some of the struggles we've run into with empty capital in the park. Our team, Dave Zimmer, Lance Bouchon, I think we're arguing there. I don't know if that's somebody else that we're getting with this. Then with the help of kind of voting department in spring of 2015, to go project by project, how we were laying things out. We've received clear sense of direction of how we were going to lay out the design. Submitted for our first permit, and our first permit took seven, eight, nine months. And they took a hundred and eighty-three turn on some of the things that they suggested. So we've had to work around that. Some of those things were found out after, taken after. But that's getting back to the week, and we're trying to get the department a longer calendar for the second, third day of every part. We set aside several hours for us when we found out we needed that. But still, some of the struggles continue. I think it's not because of lack of ability down there, but I think there's more to the staff. But I think there's also a lack of consistency. We found out last, but we've known all along that one of the things, if you set a set of documents like this down, or like this, you've got one page that you're gonna correct. They want, they told us, they want you to physically come down and insert that one page where it works best to go. Mr. Zimmer's gone down to do that for us on several occasions. Or by the office staff and one of the lead plan examiners. You're wasting your time, you don't have to do that. I received a copy of a skating email from the administrator down there chastising Mr. Bouchon for not doing it. So we're gonna follow up with him, so we've got people down there telling me, "You don't have to do that." So we're just out there. So we're working with things like greater consistency. Well, we've got, we've got three people that we communicate with. When we first started going down, they did not have the chief plan examiner. One of the, one of the key people that we found became that person. But there's three people we communicate with. There's the administrator in charge of the office, the lead plan, the chief plan examiner, the lead and plan examiner. None of those three report to one another. And that's, that's part of, part of the issue. It's been very difficult to go down there and have a very frank conversation because they had our work.
But those three people are maybe a bit inconsistent since you never come to school. I mean, they, you know, some people have changed.
The gentleman who's the chief plans examiner, as well as the office support staff, were all in that meeting. Now that he's the chief plans examiner, he's, we're receiving just a different direction on how, how to look at things as far as design goes. And in all fairness, MSA is doing the same work for the Anderson auditorium, particularly the district office building, is running with some of the same issues. So it's, it's not that, you know, our team is not, is in that field. It's just they're very, they're very, everybody across the area, and it's just slowing things down. The system is really ahead of a lot of others in terms of that, but it's complicated. There's pretty problems. We have things that are waiting there, their approval, so that, water people, sewer people, water people, so on and so forth. So it's, it's pretty, you know, dilemma. We could promise that we would have Mercer's permit on Wednesday of this week. That's, that's very, very critical for us. There's work that we can do. Without a permit, you're allowed to do all the general. We've been giving, we've got the district's charge of additional permits. What we did with Turbom is we applied for a permit for the foundation, for the new addition, and for the renovations. We met with them for several hours, a couple of weeks, and just thought about how to put those submitted. So, I mean, they're, they're trying to find ways to help us with these processes. Along the way, we still feel that some of these things are just really distracting.
Is that chief plan examiner, that's really involved with the school?
Yes.
Okay.
He needs to promise it to the meeting, but I would say, there, you know, I believe that it's easy to take a position when you're sitting out here. If you move up to this level, you've got a little bit more responsibility. And so I think that he's just, it's just, it's just a different one.
I'm just, is he the one who flipped off on the suppression issue in here?
Yeah, he was, he was a part of that meeting, actually the one that spoke with the, you know, with the idea of, here's how you go about this. And suggested going through adjudication process, which we did, we went through adjudication process. And thought that they were disappointed in what we were doing, and sat there on their hands. And then chastised Chief Martin because he wasn't there. Anyway, since I want to work, we met with them. One of the issues running in there is that for the 200 square feet dish, or the security desk, that's going to be, were required to put in the dirty sprinkler system in that, in that small area. It's required by Hamilton County, it's an issue we ran into before. That's the only area that building has to be sprinkled. One of the things is, there's only a single water line coming in off the street that serves to hide the fire hydrant on the park. It's grown fast, the mess of waters. Everybody we've talked to in Hamilton County, as well as the state of Ohio, says that there's missing water. No jurisdiction, no decree once the water line gets on our park. So in area, everybody else is telling us, you can take three sprinklers, you need enough space, that multi-master farm is supply, and if you beat, beat the code. Ever since the waterworks, it's been, no, no, no. The essence of it is, is that first they said absolutely not. Can't do it. You have to put in a separate water. Three sprinklers and a separate water line by best estimate is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Then, and the reason was, is that they have to separate the water. I did, I did. The one, the very short story is that it's brothers and sisters, several persons. We built a house with water. Where over a hundred years, since I walked, shut off the water, we shut it off and also shut off the suppression system. Took it all the same water. So they take the positions to have it separate. So, the nickel is that's why you have to separate. Then had a meeting with them and Hamilton County, and they said, well, it really is not that as much as it is for, say, for the water supply. Which we get, and we said, we've never had issues with the water supply on that property since we moved over. Well, in our third meeting, after that, I shared on the floor, I was in the meeting, I let the drinking hall. We're gonna meet, and one of them went up, thanked everybody for his time, introduced himself as Mr. Andrew Silver. I got it. So I went up and I started talking, very, very nice. He said, oh, the person you were talking to, chief engineer back there, plus something. So I went back to talking, and I said, look, here's, here's our situation. Very thorough, what I told him. He said, I don't know what he's telling you, actually you don't have to do that. Howard sent out emails to Mr. Zimmer and Lance and everybody, you know, we don't have to do this from the chief end. So we set up a meeting with them, several of them. First, first from the summer, and looked at this like we had three outs. He said, he should have never told you that. He said, this is your boss. He asked me, he should have never told you that. And he, he does that all the time, so don't you think somebody like a Tom? And as it turned out, then they said, because we pulled, turned on the building, we're required to separate, bring things up to current standards simply because of that. And I said, we pulled nothing from the building, it's a sound over here. You're telling me that this has been a longstanding policy for forty, fifty years? And they said, well, sometimes we catch it, sometimes we don't. They said, they're stuck in the middle. I said, yeah, we're the ones stuck in the middle. I have to look back, I feel like I had this conversation. You're telling us that we have to spend forty thousand dollars, we're sprinkling. Sprinkling is there. And they said, no, we're not telling you to spend, you're telling us we have to separate the dollars, we're asking. We could tab it, we could put the problem, keep it down in the county. I agree, and we laughed and talked and stood. And they said, we don't have to separate. We can't make you separate, but you sell your water. We can just simply not, simply not water. Most of the water, Rick Martin's water. You know what, Ray? What's calling? Well, I, I thought, I had a talk to Boston McCord. Boston was talking, and he's talking to people involved. And we're actually going down with Rick Martin to do it, but Boston was told that they were going to close the door. And Rick Martin, I wanted to make sure that I said, if nothing else, to see. He has been an advocate of the school, he wouldn't believe the call decision. Been a great part, you know, he has to bump it on the verge of having to come. He couldn't have it going forward in the long run. So we talked, we talked to him last week, and he said, look, we don't have the verge of having to come. We got a meeting set up, we're designing Thursday, nine o'clock. Make sure we got all of our ducks, we plan to appeal this. We're in permission, they're extending down with us to say, it's absolutely. We can put in devices, we can prevent any of the steel, water, fire runoff, but coming back, it's large. We've already got those for the fire hydrants. But that, that's the kind of thing, is it just makes no sense. We talk to people, others, permissions, we're like, got it, okay. We've talked to other sprinklers. And they said, we can decide, we can do it. Particularly public buildings, so.
It's Black Thursday, you know.
First thing we're getting, our team, I mean, our team, as soon as we had, we believe that we found out. We can find out what the appeal process is for them. Or make appeal.
So that's the point, everyone, we have to play hard on it.
Right. And this is, also this is the same organization meeting, that we can't get all of our parts in. It's, you know, what he's been for, Forest Hill, for Nyire. That they were taking the water line. So it came up there, and of course, it was the first time we ever heard this. This is all by the way. Let Nyire connect to that, that they take their pipe out, and we, we think of Anderson, the bullpen there, that they're gonna tie in there, there's some kind of water. Five and one, we're gonna do seven, lots of pipes, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Because you can, because you're sprinkling for that building. And out of the goodness of our heart, we'll supply the hydrant. Use that as a spark. The water line points down, it's down by the south, it's a south power plant. High and middle, so again, we talked to Rick Martin. He, he actually met with us on, he said, there's all the fire, there's a lot of fire, there's a reason for that. He's going back to the factory. So again, that's what we're, we have some discussion, we have to try to, to learn. We have kind of, we're, we're something safe, we're, we're trying to follow the law. We're trying to, uh, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to.
Yes, I would like to do a question. I've heard this is how the water works, but I wish you know, there's the fire suppression.
Some hours on the days. I think, I think what they're looking for is to have people doing their work as well as these water lines. You know, on their behalf. But there was, there was no discussion about how to do this.
But Nire easily, it's on the department's, you know, part.
He, he's, he's, we have, but it's, has got partners. They're harmless, my agenda, but it's not a particular case. I actually gave it to Boston, he said, "They're talking, stop." All harmless requires anything to damage our property act. Doesn't require an act. Talking through the, the Nire, the Nigga very far, they stopped, they were actually going to have their, their water line start last week. We want from all this, we're, we're, we're.
No problem, they'll take care of it?
No, they're just waiting for us to ask.
I'm holding them, before, encourage them to help participate. Had something to add, so I have to, you have to do it, it's a direct call. But they're, Cincinnati Water Works, they're very creative. They, they solve, Lance, Murdock, and Chris Pogge. It was so many things up there. So, okay, we're getting, we're getting our team to make sure we've got a written file. Rick Martin, which is awful to be honest with you. One, he'll go, he'll go to the laws of state to place this, if you're happy to ask for that.
I greatly appreciate you taking the time, giving us the detail, because most of the people around us sitting here know. They're not even going to get together to prove, to have this discussion, except that. So I appreciate taking the extra time to help the team, to help us. Very frustrating, but I appreciate your persistence.
Hard to follow right there, I gotta be honest. I get to show you some pictures of, and I think Mr. Johnson's illustration of Beirut is appropriate. I just, this is, okay. So this is a, just a photo montage of the progress of part of the buildings. Am I doing something wrong? Okay. And, and the illustration of Beirut is appropriate because any construction project, and I've been involved in quite a few of them over my career, involves intense planning, and intense modifications and adjustments to that planning as you go along. The fact that we find the major utility feeds under the elevator at Mercer is distressing, but not unbelievable. It happens quite often. So, a good team, and we, I believe, are a good team supported by the staff in the buildings and you guys as well, makes adjustments. And the adjustments at Mercer will be somewhat painless. We will still be able to do what the elevator is designed to accomplish. Unfortunately, it will fall out of phase, so it will happen next year, which will still might have an impact to education. The, the, one interesting side note, I'm just going to let these things go, running depth, keep watching as they go. One interesting side note with the Cincinnati Water Works is, is that Mr. Johnson perfectly said, they are looking for somebody else to do the work. It's pretty much the way our utilities act. They, they're always looking for the developer, or the person with the money to come fix the problem. Even if the problem wasn't created, as in the case of Anderson. We didn't create the problem. The Nire development created the problem by using the water that we were anticipating being available to us. And so those discussions, they will, they will be a fight. And the reillustration is, is what construction is oftentimes. It's a fight against the materials, it's a fight against the weather. Unfortunately, sometimes it becomes a fight amongst people. Those who wants to do the right, the least, that we do. We have effectively disrupted every building in the district right now. With the exception of your current board office, and if you need us to come over there and wreck some things, just until you kind of feel at home with everybody else, we'd be happy to. And I do encourage you, if you have a strong heart, to go out to the buildings. Mercer is a prime example of, really, and we're going to have this ready for start of school. I will tell you, assuredly, I've been doing this for a long time, and assuredly, we've never missed opening school. In my, in my career of my projects, and maybe other people can say the same. So, we are currently still focused on a schedule. It is a difficult schedule, and oftentimes not made by us. And the county building department has made it extremely difficult not to have a permit when I'm ready to start having inspections ahead. Mercer is very, very difficult to manage. Summit is another good example. We, the east end of that building is phase one. It will not be ready on time because the building permits were not available on time. Again, the building staff and the team have made adjustments so that school can begin, and begin differently than we're expected. But we just have such flexible staff and to be complimented, they've been working through this ugly process in the world. The, the Wilson project is, is one of the last ones that we'll see. Off to a good start. We had expected bad soils. We built into the program some dollars and the ability to adjust those bad soils. Back on that picture, the right-hand side was a twelve-foot deep hole. If we dug all the bad material out, laid it out on the left-hand side of that picture, dried it. Two or three days later, started to put it back in place and compact the manner. And so far, one of the allowances that we had that accelerates drying is the introduction of drying to the soil. It's whole farm is great. And we have an allowance in our contract for that. And we may not have to use it, which could be money back into our coffers for use in the, in the, and you brush right past that. And unfortunately, our principal could not be here, and she's asking to send her that picture. But we tried to capture the essence of excitement at each building, and I think her service is the best. But we are, we are fully engaged in every building. Contractors are working in concert. We are always discovering opportunities to adjust the program. Unfortunately, sometimes that ends up for change orders. Mr. Johnson illustrated one of the big problems is existing drawings and the lack thereof. We'll suffer for that as we go, the equipment is, is focused. And, um, program-wide, overall, we are still on time. And, so that's all, right? Any questions?
So, what answer, um, was my question back? On the, sliding door, able to, 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 to look at the bottom, is looking for that?
We're waiting here back from the manufacturer, Modern Fold, I believe is the manufacturer. And they have sent representatives out. They, they believe they've found what the problem is. I'm not as convinced, but they are on notice. It's a process, and they have to let the contractor do his work, fail at his work, identify that he's failed his work. Given time to fix the failure, and then finally show them the talent, say, "Okay, we're going somewhere else to make this problem fix." We're at that position where we've told them, "We can go somewhere else to make this problem fix." We still have Modern Fold Door, if it can work the way we want it to. But the problem with the door is it takes three people to operate. The intention was never to have two people dedicated to opening and closing that door multiple times a day. They can't prove to us that it can be operated the way our understanding of design is, that two people and a key can make this work. Then I think that the district would be within their rights to take the door out or something. So it may be time to solve the problem, it was a solution.
Another question, I know, there, I'm, it's, it's, but, but the, 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 whatever. Are there identifiable processes that, 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 or?
Well, the identifiable costs, it's not, it's a very good question, it's not an unfair question. The identifiable costs are normally brought, brought to by a contractor who says, "I've been delayed in the delivery, and my expectation of how long I'd have to be here." In the case of Aaron Sherwood, either of those contractors are anticipating delay claims. At, Mercer, we don't have a delay yet. We pretty much instructed them to move forward as if you have a problem. Planes tend to be when you can't open school. When I have to go get a new classroom. When we thought we were going to be done with the whole program in September of 2018, and it turns out to be January of 2019. Then there's cost, there's costs of, of my services, you know, I'm still stuck here, I'm still, I'm stuck. I'm, you're stuck with me, is what I should say. So those are, those are, those are real costs, and so far, we haven't had any of those kind of real costs, with the exception of, basically. Great question.
Is there anything we as a board, either individually or collectively, can do to help with any of these issues? Whether it is Water Works, or, or the Building Department, or, you know, any contacts?
That's a great question, and yes. If you have a relationship with people that are in positions of responsibility and authority, or the voters, people that we're dealing with at our level, yes, encouraging phone call to help accelerate. We un, I, I think that things happen at the Building Department because of influence. Other projects may take precedence because of influence. So, yeah, if we can influence the process from an administrative level, from a higher level than where, where we are, yeah, that, that helps. It, it tends to be counterproductive sometimes when, when it's, I'm coming to beat this person up. It, it, so, so the encouragement would be to encourage them to be helpful to us, because it is becoming impactful to our program.
Maybe we can have some discussions with two of you on one, I don't mean as a group. Because if we understand who the players are, we, we may have contacts, and Jillian was telling me, of a relationship she has that may be of great help.
May be helpful.
And I don't know that I have any, large firm in mind.
I was frustrated, I thought, I was, I was, Rick, you're talking, you're saying, you're saying, you're saying. So, so, you're saying, you're saying, you're saying. Well, you took this list when you had it. You called this, and I stood there, and, and we're getting together, I'm just sort of holding it, Rick Martin, he's, he's starting on the pad, he's, he's, but, but not just, I, you know, this, this, and, 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 and.
And I, and I would say, you, you know, as a school board, we're in a unique position. We, we don't have a plan B for educating kids in spaces we don't have. Kroger's doesn't have to self-attack its children, they'll still be able to be Krogers. But come August fifteenth, if we're not ready to start handing this over, we will have serious issues. And so, I'm not sure that, that sometimes people in Cincinnati Water Works or the Building Department kind of get that. I will say that the exception to that is we have a building inspector who's doing our work, who's phenomenal. In fact, has gone on our behalf to say to the Building Department, "Why can't you get this permit released?" Got the permit released. So there, there is ways, I think, to influence the process in a positive way. If we influence the process in a negative way, then maybe we go further down the stack. But I, I think it's important for, for those folks to understand, and I've tried to illustrate to them, we don't have a plan B for opening school. We're going to open school.
Well, the same goes for when they said we're not going to sell. Really, here, the, the school, water, I mean, I, I don't, I don't believe that.
Just when it comes to the Building Department, you guys, it could be a couple of months ago, and made a focal, my understanding is that. Yeah, it can, we, we're able to get, that, our, and, and, so, it's all, it's all, it's, it's, like, all back, all colors coming in, and, and, it's not, it's kind of, some, the same thing. I've been talking with some people, but I just hope that something happened there. The one thing I want to do is make sure that we are, some, coordinated in some way, because I don't want to come in with guns blazing on somebody where maybe something's actually moving forward. But, or, uh.
Turpin, Turpin is okay, we've got some time built in, phase one, that we, that we leave in the next time we work with, because of Turpin.
I'd like to talk, you have to be the champion of those left, to reorganize that, but, 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 but. Again, we took a long time on this, but obviously, this is very important, hopefully, it's important for most people to sign. It is really frustrating and just difficult to accept the fact that we've got hard costs from our taxpayers. We're not getting anything tangible for it, it's because of government incompetence, whatever, whatever you want to call it. That is just very difficult to accept, because, you know, for our taxpayers, they have to pay money, but we're not getting anything for it. That is just very difficult to accept.
Question.
More than frustrating. Anyway, anybody, other comments, questions on this? Gentlemen, anything else to add? Again, this is a long time, but I think it's a valuable conversation. Thank you. Moving on, item seven point two. Yeah. Transportation update, superintendent Preblets.
Thank you. We continue to coordinate, Ray, myself, Rick, Mike, Broadwater, Mike Overby, this process with the Anderson process. And the last time we were together formally at the board meeting, we talked about hopefully having something completed and ready for the board to take a closer look at for the July bid process, which is part of the Anderson process. And so we continue to do that, we're getting closer to a plan, but we don't have anything formally at this particular point in time. I would call your attention and remind you that we provided a site rubric to the Board of Education a while back. We've also shared that with our Anderson Township colleagues, which is giving us as a board, or you as a board, information about sites that are potential. And we came to the conclusion that after about three months of research, that our own property at this particular point in time seems to be our best option, given the fact that many of the properties that we took a look at are just either unavailable, or we don't have the ability to purchase them, because someone else either has, or they are no longer available for purchase or even lease. So, we're working for the best scenario to maintain our bus compound and the Anderson High School campus through a division, way to divide that property to the best, so that we can maintain safety for students who are walking, accessibility to and from school, and also traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. We want to try to increase the student parking opportunities on that campus, so that students obviously have enough room for cars that they drive, and to try to keep that traffic, student traffic, distant from transportation traffic, and also being liable with parent traffic in the morning. So, we're looking at all of those things. Want to make sure that we have the best use of the property for co and extracurricular activities, including band and the performing arts, and all of the things that happen with those programs. We are currently, with some of the options that we are reviewing on behalf of the board, beginning to get some cost items associated with that that give us better information as to what the cost associated with some of the options that we have available to us, or the options that we are looking at. Try to come to the best conclusion and also do it with appropriate use of taxpayer investments. And we also need to make sure that when we're working on the campus, that we are truly neighbors, and we have neighbors on all sides of us. And we want to make sure that our facilities are commensurate and with what the community expects, and are cordial, if you will, with our neighbors on all sides. And so, we're going to have more information, we'll continue to provide that to the board, but this evening, we don't have a solid recommendation. But I think we're getting much closer, and we will involve the board, obviously, and others as needed, based on the board's guidance.
I appreciate the way you've laid out this challenge. You don't really have a lot of options when you look at the grid that you laid out. I guess the one or two that we already had, weren't really options, because the cost to the taxpayers on annual basis. It's so great that nobody, uh, you know, you're listening to this, and, 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 choose that option. So, I appreciate you organizing this, of course, to give us the best solution that we can offer. Anything else on transportation? Moving on, more discussion? Anything for the board discussion this evening? I will make mention of the fact that.
...at the district before the bond project we've worked with, they've done a lot of work up in Turpin, uh, Turpin over the course of the year. So number one, we felt comfortable based on that experience. But we've interviewed, we actually sit down and had them face to face with the labor and interview them and go through all their numbers. They know what everybody else has did by that point. And they commit to the numbers, they go through the specifications on the equipment that's been there to make sure the equipment that they've submitted needs all that. So we go through all that with them, uh, prior to going on the board agenda. We do that literally forty-eight to seventy-two hours after the bid. And we schedule that while the bid's being opened. Uh, we tell them that we want to go through everything we have on here, you know, like this. We feel very comfortable.
If you recall, we had the same thing with the district line HBC controls where we had to spread it maybe eight hundred thousand dollars there. Uh, we had a vendor that was just ultra aggressive, looking at school leadership and very, very aggressive about themselves. Uh, let's see here, nine point eleven is approval of the lease with the Modern Home Company, otherwise known as Knights of Columbus, uh, up on Warner's Road. Uh, they've been very, uh, they've been very great working with Ricketts and interviewing the folks up there, Mr. Russo, Mr. Ox- Oxine, Dick Oxine. And we've worked with them about leasing a portion of the ground directly crossing the intersection from construction traffic to our stuff. Construction trailers, equipment laid out there will all be over there. Uh, all we have to do is erect fencing, we're putting in gravel. The fencing that goes up the duty of the contract, we will go ahead and put the gravel. We would have to pay for that, one way or the other. As we might as well do it on campus or have it ready for them when they go in. I think I need to pull a, just a simple zoning agreement. Don't have to go through zoning, you know, I think a lot of the use is to take an application over, submit a form for this, the lease. Provides for that twenty-four months, plus we have a six-month option. We have up to six months where we can move, you know, if we want. We also have the right of first refusal on that. So we've got to ask for them.
Why'd they give that to you? Just 'cause you asked?
So...
Good.
Yeah. So, no, they've been very, very nice to work with and pay out. This was a very easy process. We wanted to make sure that we had something that protected the signs.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what the value of the lease of land is, but everything else you've negotiated is, seems to be very, very tight, yet this one looked like, uh, was more than I was expecting. Is that just the way it goes? I mean, is that the point rate?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we actually came down, I mean, there's a little bit more acreage there that we're leasing. We're probably leasing three or four acres of ground, I'm there told. Uh, because if you look at the, the enclosure where I've got marked off, it's a little deceptive there. I mean, it's, it's a pretty wide swath of ground that we're taking. Uh, and it was imperative for us to leave.
Right.
Working with the township on specifically where they want us to access the property. And what we've made with them is there's obviously sidewalk running up through there. And we found entering the property, crossing that sidewalk and moving apparently makes the sidewalk whole in the, in the project. Hopefully, leave behind in the area that can, uh, be further used by Turpin students to track through the parking. So superintendent recommends a board approved lease with the Modern Home Company, that's the name of the organization. Nine point twelve is bid open for a childhood playground at Sherwood Elementary School. Uh, the bids were opened in red on May twenty-fifth in a childhood playground package at Sherwood Elementary. Uh, we only had, uh, one contractor bid on this. The charge of general contractor, because more than just the playground equipment we're putting in, soft surface there, fencing around the playground, it's going to be somewhat the same, but not exactly the same as the kindergarten, uh, playground, which is prior to the start of the seventeen, eighteen school year, so during December seventeen. So the superintendent recommends a board approved resolution toward the contract with Javri Allen Corporation, low bidder is shown in the attachment. Uh, next, the PUN number is bid open for loose furniture, uh, loose furnishings bid package for Air Sherwood Elementary Schools, Nagel Middle School Classroom Furniture. Bids were opened in red on May twenty-fifth for loose furniture package for Air Sherwood and Nagel, uh, for the loose furniture. The complete bid tabulation recommend, recommendations are shown in the attachment. Uh, superintendent recommends a board approved resolution toward the contract the schools in. I'll see if the low bidder is showing in the attachment. And I'd add also is that we, we met with both Mark Sexton and the schools in. Mark Sexton's worked with the school leadership for a lot of years. We met with him, we also met with the schools in. Uh, went through the specifications here for all the furniture, covered all the specifications, we met the timelines, uh, the delivery, we talked over that. Uh, what you may not know here, and some of the audience know, but the folks in half, obviously, we could know this, uh, what's going into those buildings is pretty much exactly what the teachers want. Uh, Mike Odgerger worked with Jennifer Funesa, so they created a virtual catalog for, for the teachers. The teachers went out and selected what they wanted in their classrooms. Obviously, there was, we had to kind of manipulate some of the numbers because you might have someone wondering if the country's again, what he tabled was another one or two. We tried to read some of the ground, but everybody was kind of focusing in at the same time as being the same type of materials as new. So that's what we did with the forty trigger as far as, you know, they went at Nagel for touching all the, the new furniture's going into all the classroom classrooms over there. Uh, so-
Hey Ray, at one point, there was a budget even though, they got what they wanted, but we didn't have a budget. So, I mean, I just want to make sure it's really clear on all the furniture. We had budget numbers that everybody got for selecting what their classroom furniture was.
Yeah, we had, we had money built into the budget for all this, and that's been sacred. For those who haven't, not, they don't, or in Sherwood, your numbers are not, we kept those as, as safe as well. As well as, we're working on, we're going to be following this up hopefully not in July, but the August meeting. Uh, there'll be a technology, maybe a special board meeting like that, or if we have a technology package, we're going to be touching all the classrooms and all the classrooms as well. Uh, so I think I need to recommendation on this one. Uh, the next one is loose furniture bid package for Air Sherwood Elementary. This is office furniture. Uh, it's open at the same time, but because we have a different vendor here, we made it, uh, a separate bid item, a separate agenda item. Uh, bids were opened in red on May twenty-fifth, uh, for loose furniture package for Air Sherwood Elementary Schools. Complete bid tabulation recommendations shown in the attachment. Superintendent recommends a board approved resolution toward the contract with Continental Office Corporation, low bidder in the attachment. Uh, what this is, is there's new conference rooms going into both of the schools, so it's furniture going into conference rooms, furniture going into waiting rooms, uh, in the new, new office areas. And it's, it's new chairs for all the classrooms. Speech rooms, new chair going into each classroom. That's how it is. Uh, next is, I can't even close the mic. How does this work?
School buses.
School buses. My voice is going because I've been practicing this part.
Ah.
Uh, school bus bid replacement. Uh, we opened, uh, bids for school buses on June seventh for two replacements, seven, two passenger school buses. Complete bid tabulation recommendations shown in the attachment. The district purchased one stock bus, which is pretty much immediately available to us, and one made the order bus. Uh, these will be purchases made in the next fiscal year. So we're bringing the award of the bid now. Purchase orders won't be issued until after the start of our, our next fiscal year. It'll all build into our budget. We actually come to get those a blessing. We have a budget in place.
Are these propane or diesel?
Pardon?
Are these propane or diesel?
Uh, these are diesel buses. No, excuse me, they are propane buses. Yeah, that's right, because one, one of these suppliers couldn't meet the specification because they, they aren't selling. Uh, it used to be international, now it's just, uh, Russian. They can't supply the, the buses.
Do they fuel up at our location?
Yeah.
For propane?
Yeah. And we've actually got larger fuel tanks, specs apart of, of these, these as well. So kids are pretty excited to ride those buses. They know right away they're riding on something that's a little bit different because they can't hear it, they don't smell. Uh, it's pretty, pretty neat. So the su- treasurer recommends, I got the treasurer's chart out there. The superintendent recommends board award the contract, partner of bus sales and service for replacement, school buses indicated in the attachment. Last of all, utilities in dramatics elementary. Unlike the easement that I just referenced, uh, it seems like a half hour ago, uh, to Nyer, this is an easement that's brought to us by, by Duke. Uh, the work is, it'll take a part, uh, as a part of our site utility package, dramatics. This is all working on, on our property for us, by Duke. This gives them the ability to even do this. It'll be taking overhead line, keeping the building from the ground, as well as boosting the service. So when we go to air conditioning building, we've got sufficient electrical service to serve, to serve our future. Uh, so the superintendent recommends a board approved agreement using the show in the attachment. I did give this, actually put in, uh, administrative content, the email I got back from Ryan on this, because it was a very quick turnaround time. I didn't want to hold it up for the July meeting, the forecast would start right now, but I sent it down to him and Ross, and they got back to me right away. So this is very standard agreement to do a task.
Ray, other than aesthetics, what is the benefit of having the utilities on there?
Uh, well, I've got the utility lines, get ice on them and all.
Yeah.
During the winter. Uh, they're, it's just, it's just much safer.
It makes it way better.
And you have utility lines going across, diagonally across the park.
Right.
So it's just for a safe, safety standpoint and, you know, peace of mind when it comes to continuation of service. It's just a lot better. And it looks good.
Anything else? Thank you very much. I know that was, like I say, a lot long, but it's really exciting to hear about all these things happening.
We're going to talk about work. I know, it's a very simple topic.
After an hour and fifteen minutes, um, reason for being here. Uh, curriculum, Mrs. Adams.
Item ten point one is our Saint Joseph Orphanage Service Agreement for the twenty sixteen seventeen school year. So the superintendent recommends that you approve it, um, what's shown in the attachment. Item ten point two is the College Credit Plus Sample Pathway and Course Offerings for the twenty sixteen seventeen school year. We brought this to you earlier in the, um, the school year when we were doing the course guides for the high school. Um, but what happened shortly after that was published was an opportunity to transform our anatomy and physiology class into a College Credit Plus class. So it has a new name, Biology for the Health Professions, and it's able to offer College Credit Plus and attract, um, a, a unique group of our students. So prior to requesting approval of the College Credit Plus Sample Pathway, which again is a requirement by the state, and course offering for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, it is being presented to the board. Um, the attached program description, including the course offerings and the current weighted course policy, will be available for review in the curriculum department until the July twenty-fifth Board of Education meeting. So we're just letting you know that that's a new opportunity.
Pass, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think there's a lot of, I think Tony has something else. Does the board's curriculum committee look at this or?
No, there haven't been any meetings.
Okay.
It's Jim, it's Jim, it is.
But I'm not the chair.
No.
That would probably be something appropriate for-
Yeah, we were already in the, we were in the process of doing all of the course guide when, then when that decision was made, so there haven't been any committee meetings.
This, you had mentioned College Credit Plus before, and, uh, the more, I spent quite a bit of time, uh, learning about that, and the more I learned, the more disappointed I became about the College Credit Plus program and how, uh, it would fit with Forest Hills. I think that if the legislature chooses to make some changes, it'd like to come something that is, uh, we could get a little bit more excited about. But as it is, it's unfortunate that it's, uh, just not, doesn't have everything that we need to be good for Forest Hills. Here we're gonna-
Yeah, Natasha, between you and, and maybe Citizen, would you reach out to each other?
Sure.
I mean, if nothing else to decide, to get a feel for what's coming up, so we know what we're looking for.
You want to do that in July before our next meeting? Is that what you're hoping?
I think, I, I think Tony would like to.
Okay, let's ask him, and we'll find out.
And, and there was an issue that came up with the waiting of courses and sort of, you know, the student who took the sort of traditional forest route versus the college credit plus student, and how that ended up maybe having some unintended consequences. Not that they were bad consequences, but they were unintended. I think that committee should have a little discussion about that as well.
Okay, great, we can do that.
So I've heard that not every school district chose to interpret what we thought was the law the way we did. Uh, doesn't make, doesn't make us wrong, doesn't make them right, but it's something we may want to investigate. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Moving on, uh, human resources, Mrs. Carnahan.
At this time, I'm going to defer to Mr. Johnson for just a moment. He wants to speak about-
And I also, um, wanted to just say, um, you know, he was beloved by the staff at Anderson High School, and, um, that was very much in evidence Friday evening at the, um, at the viewing, when there was a very long line of students and staff from Anderson and the custodial staff. There were quite a few, um, folks there. Um, so we do want to express our sympathy to not only his, his family, but also to the Anderson and Forest Hills family as well. So, good, good guy. So, um, item A, retirement. Um, Curtis Quinlan is going to be retiring after sixteen years, uh, at Forest Hills as a bus driver. Item B, resignation. These are several folks, um, who are leaving the district. Item C, we have two leaves of absence for the entire sixteen seventeen school year. Item D, which just covers item E, F, G, H, K, and M. Item E, we do have appointments for the fifteen sixteen school year. As you can probably tell by the HR report, we're in that fifteen sixteen, sixteen seventeen. We're going a little bit of both, but item E does, um, fifteen sixteen, as does item F. And you can see, you know, the work continues in the summer, even, even though the students aren't, um, or at least not very many of our students are here. Um, we still continue to have school, summer school and so forth. Continues on page three. Uh, at the top of page four, item G, substitute for fifteen sixteen. Item H, um, these are some, uh, supplementals. Item I, we are beginning now in the twenty sixteen seventeen school year. Uh, you see change of assignment. Stephanie Mibers is, um, going to be moving from Turpin High School to Nagel Middle School as assistant principal. We see also some teaching staff and non-teaching staff who are transferring to different positions. Item J, change of salary. Um, these two individuals in the non-teaching staff are not on a, a specific salary schedule, which is why we bring them to you individually. Item K, uh, appointments. These are folks who are going to be our new teaching, uh, teachers in sixteen seventeen school year. And then we have classified staff. Um, Wendy Ray has actually been with us, but is, um, coming back in a little different position. And you see, uh, classified staff there. Um, Mr. Jo-, uh, Stanley Jones back there for our videography. Item L, special services appointment for the sixteen seventeen school year. Item M, reappointment of personnel, Mr. Thatcher. Item N, substitute personnel. Item O is a settlement agreement with our Forest Hills Teachers Association. As always, we, uh, like to say thank you to the FHTA for their collaboration and work with us. Please see the exhibit for item O. Item P is a consultant service agreement. Also, please see the exhibit. Since the board meeting, um, there has not been a change in the staffing. And, you know, all of those changes that are occurring over the summer as, as individuals leave, as we replace as individuals, those will all be reconciled in the, in the fall, and we'll give you that final number. Uh, but right now, it still seems at seven ninety point nine eight. The superintendent recommends that the board approve the HR report as presented.
Questions or comments? Item B, uh, I noticed that, uh, we were, had a Mandarin Chinese teacher resigning, but Mrs. Carnahan assured me that that position will be filled and this program is not going away. So I thought that was a good thing.
Yes.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yes.
Anything else? Moving on to technology.
I have two items for you this evening. The first one is Forward Edge Contract. Um, it was coming to an end at the end of this month, and I sent out a staff survey asking everybody what they thought of Forward Edge, and it was overwhelmingly positive. So there was enough evidence to say it was worth continuing, um, that particular agreement. And in fact, they agreed to lock us in at our exact rate, um, for the next two years. So we thought it was fiscally, um, the best decision for us to commit to two more years. So the superintendent, um, requests that the board approve the Forward Edge Contract at a rate of forty-five thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents a month, um, for two years. The next item, item twelve point two, the contract says HCC. It's formerly known as HCCA. Um, they provide particular services from treasurer's department for their fiscal services, to create purchase orders, et cetera, all the way to our gradebook software. And so the superintendent requests that the board approve the annual services agreement with HCC.
Any questions? Glad to hear Forward Edge. That's all positive, because I think many years ago, we were going through some tumpy times, but hopefully that's been smoothed out.
It has been excellent. And apparently opinion of others.
Anything else for Mr. Cormick? Uh, moving on, thank you. I'm moving on to treasurer's report. Uh, item thirteen point one.
This is after the board appointed delegate alternate in the COPA annual business meeting held in November.
Uh, do you need to add that now as a second thing or do you-
Okay, it's part of the open, so you guys decide.
Well, should we set that as well?
Does it happen to anybody?
I will volunteer, sure. Are you, are either of both of you wanting to be alternate?
Um, I'm sure.
November fourth.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Ray, are you going Julie?
I, I, I don't really.
Um, I believe, I believe.
Oh, okay.
It's the week.
All right. Well, then.
Maybe it should be.
It was an option item at the, uh, soiree.
I, I-
Let's assume that. Oh, actually, we can get one of the other two.
Yeah, I, I, I think I can.
Thank you.
Item, uh, teen point two is the, uh, next year, the sixteen seventeen temporary appropriations as we do every year. Uh, temporary appropriations are for all district funds listed by fund. Uh, the equal service interim measure to operate the district until the board approves permanent appropriations, which ought to be in September. Um, as Tammy said, that, uh, that's when we really have our final staff in place. I will say that the, the general fund portion is pretty tight right now. We believe it will be, um, based on any changes that would occur that would modify that. Um, we'll also be bringing, uh, current appropriations as well as an updated five-year forecast. We'll be in the fiscal year, start another one. So that's when, um, the planning will occur, you'll have another year of, of actual numbers. So recommends board approve, uh, the adoption of sixteen seventeen temporary appropriations at the fund level for all district funds.
Have any, any chance to take a look at that? Any questions? Like a straightforward?
The, uh, treasurer, treasurer's report, item thirteen point three, donations, big month. Uh, we had, um, tons of scholarships, after prom, yearbook, Wilson PTA, just another great month of our partners, uh, over forty thousand dollars, um, giving back to, uh, the kids in the district. So we appreciate that. Um, item B, we have the statement of word counts. This is tricky time where we need to line everything up at year end. So we have a few funds that we're waiting on, some funds, but we have requests outstanding. Those five funds that have a negative balance at the moment. Um, item C was just, uh, general fund receipts. Um, one comment there, we mentioned the last couple of months, um, Hamilton County going through a software update, so our tip process was delayed. It's a big number. We want it in this year. Uh, just makes our financials, um, better represented over time to have a big seven million dollar number, not in the long fiscal year. Uh, we did ask for, and I appreciate Ken Deets' help, uh, with Anderson Township. Uh, we did ask for, and see the significant advance, which is outside of what we normally would do, but uh, this whole process has been outside of that. And we should have tomorrow or Wednesday the balance of that, so it will be in the correct fiscal year. So that's part of the reason why the revenue's a little behind, but that will come. Um, item D and E, it shows our expenditure pattern for the year. Um, you know, we're, uh, eighty-eight percent of our planned appropriations have been spent or encumbered. Um, we're spending a little lower than projected over the last three years, over two percent. So it's a big number that will impact how the forecast, um, rolls out in September possibly. F is our monthly bank reconciliation. G, investments. H, amendments to the appropriation. Uh, no change in the general fund. I, we have our, uh, annual approval of the updated travel allowance for all those that are eligible for mileage reimbursement. Uh, J, asking the board to approve the established minimum credit cash fund as we do each year. Um, K is a big item. It's a list of all the district support organizations, uh, PTAs, boosters, FEMA, all those that, um, have a best, that unique status where they are really our partners, uh, and have access to our buildings to, to help kids and help us, uh, do our business. So we appreciate that, uh, and the board's approval of them. Uh, L is another annual transfer. There's some uniqueness to this year, and I want to, uh, make sure that we read this correctly, but we're transferring ones to the permanent improvement turf replacement fund, which we always do. Um, so this first item is, uh, transferring the net rental revenues and savings, um, uh, for the board resolutions from many years ago to the permanent improvement fund. Right now, we have two, one for Anderson, one for Turpin. Um, so that's that item. Uh, part two of that is, um, is asking that the net rental revenue, um, from, um, moving forward for all, um, turf rentals, maintenance expense reimbursements, and all athletic facility rentals be, um, also deposited to general fund and bring an annual resolution for that, um, each year. The difference is, uh, what we'd like to do is merge those replacement funds into one, because when we have a turf need, it doesn't matter what fund it is, whoever's up gets that money. So we'll have a district turf replacement fund, which is really what we're, we're asking for. And then-
Sure. So, do the boosters have to say that's okay, or this is not really, because once they get the turf, it's-
Yeah, the district took ownership of it, and obviously the, the board at the time, um, wanted to have enough. If we had to go back to grasp, we could.
Right.
So we have enough money.
Are you still a person that sort of in charge of the rental?
So, so that's item L, is the regular transfer. Item M is requesting the board approve the merging of the turf replacement cost centers and having an athletic facility rental be deposited to general fund. And then every year, we will bring it back to the board for your approval to move that to that cost center. Um, so it'll be an item you'll see every year. Um, it's just going to be different because we're asking it to be not just the turf rental, but the athletic rentals, which would be gyms, uh, baseball, softball pools. Uh, we did that this year, if you recall, to help fund the start of lacrosse. Um, so we're asking that that continue, um, and there are a couple reasons. If you recall, obviously lacrosse was a paying customer, and now they're a partner. So some of our turf rentals have gone away, and this was a way to actually use athletic rentals appropriately for athletic future need.
Is the revenue coming in at a rate at which we'll cover the next two replacements that will be needed at some point in the future?
Yeah, it should. I mean, I think the, the, the real question is, is that as we move forward, if we do modify that number to additional turf opportunities, what, um, what that rental, uh, program looks like. Uh, this gives us the best opportunity to do that. I hope it's the, you know, in the eight, nine, ten year range, that will continue to improve. Um, we don't know where this supply chain will run out. Right now, it's still an active demand. Right now, it's still an active demand that we have in the community. So, and we have great locations. So we're still a prime area for people to plan. So, the two things, one is the regular transfer, but then also merging that, so it's not really an accounting issue.
Got it.
Who rents where, it's all together. It makes it cleaner for us as we do make those decisions at the district level. And then N is the resolution requesting advanced payments. This is just asking Hamilton County order to make the payments to us in advance for calendar years 15 and 16 for general fund, bond retirement, and permanent improvement obligation. So recommend the board approve this report as well as item 5.1 through 13.3, as well as the resolution that the board appoint Randy Spindler to the district as director of the board during the day.
Your motion?
I approve that we approve items 9.1, 13.3, and that portion of the resolution naming Randy Smith as our governor. So, just to keep that as a caveat.
Jeffrey?
Mr. Froman?
Yes, this is District.
Yes. Mr. Froman?
Yes. Moving on, reports to the Board of Education. 14.1, Business Advisory Committee Report. Can I get one more financial foot company?
Sure.
Is, most people know this, but the change orders and things that we're going through, this is a standard process for, we haven't done that in our district in a while, so I think it's important to know. We build that in, obviously, especially on a renovation project. Those are built in. So there's a lot of items and a lot of finances involved, but those are part of what we put as plan. I think the board all knows that. I want to make sure that the public knows that when they see items of change order. It's obviously our job to manage those, and Ray and his team do a great job of managing that. But it is what happens when you open up buildings for the first time. It is why renovation change orders are much larger than new construction change orders. Most of what Ray mentioned, where we opened this up and found this, or the group wouldn't support this. Because those are things that you have in the renovation environment. Obviously, we plan for that and obviously we manage that.
It's important to keep score. We're doing that, but I just want to mention that these items are a lot and they're not, we do expect that.
And they're not only, they're not only positive.
Well, as long as we're catching up. Each of these nine projects, understandable projects, projects, understandable projects, each of these nine projects, not one to the others, but honestly, each of them is a project.
Before you go, I also just want to say thank you to Ray and your team. And I know it's a bunch of people, but you're the lead guy. And I just want to tell you how much, on behalf of the community, appreciate your, what you're doing, but also your attention to detail. And every dollar is being looked at, and I try to think that's true. And I can.
You couldn't see it, but I was seeing it. Thank you very much. Item 4.1, we don't have a business advisory committee meeting spread out for the summer. Our next meeting is September 8th, but we have advertised for new applicants and we received a significant number. And we have added five or six folks to that committee. I think we're turning over a couple and adding five or six, so we'll have our next meeting September 7th.
Moving on, Forest Hills Foundation for Education.
The Forest Hills Foundation, that was due eight, 16, 15, 14, 13, 12, 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And both Randy and Jim were there, went to respond to the panel, and he said, well, yeah, they're looking. And there's a lot of, you had to go on the board and the thing that I noticed the most was that, you know, a couple of millennials are already coming out. So that's, that's a good thing, I think, that I saw, given perspective of my own age. So, at the, the thing was, the actual board meetings every year, you could have, and I was giving highlights. And the, of course, along my engagement, there was a team involved out in on July the 3rd. The, the facilities, the RAP items, the funding involved, the, the, the average, the five players, the rest of over 1,000 registered. And after the date of the meeting, there was a net, in total, of $42,000, and I can make the best assumption I can, that was added back. There were a lot of the alumni that were contracted, they should, they should have the foundation, in honor of the community. Program initiatives, we, person in charge of that community, I guess that was working, he was working with, and I brought water, and he, he has to put it all, and to grant applications, he would be, our office, on September 7th. The Soiree, this is coming, 12, 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. And, and it's a new place, and there was a tour of that, that facility, to me, I was not part of the draft, but.
They did the new mercy tower.
Right, the Anderson mercy tower.
And we will be, I believe, the first group in there to use it. Actually, we'll be in there before it's officially open. So we'll be the first community look at this really neat new facility.
And the other significant event was, there was a forest, his honor, our forest, his dad, and a board member, he was led the foundation for the last.
Legislative Leo's on report. I think I've mentioned, I've been appointed as one of the two representatives from National School Board Association to represent the second congressional district at a conference in Washington DC, where basically two people from every congressional district come in. We get training for two or three days. I call it drinking from a fire hose, because they go through a lot of high-level stuff. And then they turn us loose to make calls on our representatives the following Tuesday. Both our senators were kind enough to give, give us time to talk with them about some of the issues. I was really impressed with both Senator Portman and Senator Brown, how they were, had been briefed well on what the key education issues were. And we also met with Congressman Brad Winstrup later that day. And again, I was very impressed how in tune he was with some of the key education issues. The four issues that we were focusing on, the first one was the implementation of the Every Student Succeed Act. And what that is, is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act was passed, I guess, in the 60s. It was the first go-around of this. Most recently, it was called No Child Left Behind. And it hadn't been reauthorized in some time, so it had expired, but they continue to operate as though it was still in effect. This was interesting this time because the Every Student Succeed Act was very different in that I think a number of sources said it was the biggest divestiture of federal authority back to the states in 25 years, not just education, but anywhere in the federal government. And what was interesting was it put the burden back on the state to do a lot of things. And I don't think our group realized the, quite the impact and the magnitude of what had been done, because we've been asking for them to reauthorize this for many years. It was also kind of interesting to see that some of the congressmen and senators that came to speak to our larger group were very disappointed in the administration because they were not interpreting it exactly as the way the law is prescribed, nor, they were not interpreting it, no, the US Department of Education was not writing rules that were consistent with the way the law was written. So like I said, some congressmen and senators expressed it in some very direct language, their disappointment with the way that's, so it'll be very interesting to follow that to see how that turns out. The other three issues were the Child Nutrition Act, that's one that needs to be reauthorized, hasn't been reauthorized. There are a number of issues in there where last time they passed it, it had some unintended consequences. It did impact Forest Hills. The third issue was the Perkins Career and Technical Education Act. That's something that we haven't really participated, as I understand it, significantly in the past, but it will probably become more important to us. And so as they reauthorize that, hopefully they'll make some changes that are more beneficial to school districts like Forest Hills. The last one was the federal education investments. It's always Title I and IDEA, which are never funded to the level at which Congress prescribed. And frequently, we're going in and back to ask for them to fund the full amount. I did want to thank Tia Strauss and Natasha and Betsy for their help in giving me some of the background information before I went out, because it is very helpful when you talk to legislators and quite frankly, their staff are the people who are really, I find out they're really the decision makers. If you could give them very specific data and examples of how this impacts students in their district, it's much more impactful than just going up begging for money. That's all I had. See if you have any questions. Moving on to Forest Hills Teachers Association, Miss Lauer.
I have 14 change orders. Ray, I can't compete with that. It's amazing. Thank you for all that hard work. I've had the chance to myself, I've been kind of driving around into the schools and I said something to Dave Spencer the other day, that it looks, you know, bulldozers out front. I think it'd be cool if we had a mini cam, though, on each building, you know, and do a progressive change would be really cool, because it's really exciting. I can't wait to see the kids and the staff back and see all these great changes that are taking place. And it is pretty overwhelming. I just wanted to make sure tonight, as I went forward to congratulate Wilson and Mr. Buck and Mrs. Daggett and Mr. Broadwater and, and just as a reminder, Mr. Vandemere and the staff from Nagel Middle School are in Washington DC this week, receiving their third designation since 2009 as a national schools to watch this week as well. And I think sometimes when we give these great awards and we see everybody getting them, that we, we kind of just go, okay, yay, great job. But in reality, that's, it seems common here, but in reality, that's not a common thing to see that much success of state, local, national. Those are big awards, and we should really be excited to watch our staff and our people get those opportunities. So I just want to make sure from the association side that we say, hey, great job, those are great things. I sent an article, I think, Randy, you had asked me last month after I shared some data and, it's music, this key in tonight, it's great, to share an article with you that I received, and I think you got that one too. And then there's one this evening I'll share a little bit from. As we go forward, we had four words that we were kind of looking at, as I'm thinking, as we move into next year. And it's inspire, discern, create, and contribute. Inspire, discern, create, and contribute. And as the association moves forward during the 2016, 2017 school year, we hope these words are used to formulate our mission for the upcoming school year as well. Last month, I talked a lot about the legislative changes, and we mentioned them again, some of the big ones that are happening. I know this summer, our goal is, as we watch teachers every summer, I Googled always, what do teachers do in the summer? And some people always have to, millions of things come up. But obviously, a lot of our teachers are attending classes themselves, doing professional development. I know here in the district, we have several opportunities that teachers are involved in. We have teachers traveling with students abroad. We have people coaching and teaching summer school, reading, participating in summer professional development. We have people presenting at state and national conferences. And hopefully, the number one thing I'm hoping a lot of them are doing is enjoying their time with their kids and their family and getting rejuvenated. So when they come back in August, we're ready to go. Tonight's article that I have for you is about evidence that having strong teacher associations and unions in schools produces more productivity and higher achievement for students. And this one came out of research out of Harvard by a Dr. Susan Moore Johnson, and was written by Wes Williams. And basically, what it talks about is that the research is showing that when we have a productive working force together, and a board and an association, that those decisions like you're talking about with ESA and so forth, are showing that local decision basing makes a stronger opportunity. So the research that was done included over 30 union presidents throughout eight states. And that the one thing that was common was that the research was that there's no monolithic teachers association policy incorrectness are made daily depending on the relationships among the leadership. It's key to progressive student success. Working to create future and maintain relationships gives class size, creative opportunities for students, and positive morale. Last week, I know Superintendent Prebels had the opportunity, started with your group, and I was reading through some of the comments about what makes a great school and what were issues and concerns for my own community. And I think one of the things the board, I believe, also received some information about our Otest rating, is that correct? Did you guys see that one? With our evaluation system here in our district. We're very, very fortunate. We have a strong group of people doing a lot of great things. And reflecting on that and assessing that, as we move forward together, even through the work that we're doing, is going to keep increasing our opportunities for our students and making those kinds of great choices. With that, any questions or concerns? I'll pass on a couple articles for you. Thank you. Happy fourth of July.
I just want to comment, you have mentioned touch on this twice in your report.
Yes.
It's something that I think we do sometimes take for granted. And the more time I spend elsewhere in the state with board members around the country, we are so lucky in this school district to have the faculty, the staff, administrator, people, we just heard from Ray, who, like we see, treasurer, take it for granted for Forest Hills, but some of these people that I've talked to around the state, can't imagine what we like at school district that we have in Forest Hills. So again, thank you for, thank you for dealing with the faculty and everybody.
So even in tough change order days, there's always good and change, and we move forward. So thank you.
Before I want to accept the motion for executive session, I just want to point out that our next regular meeting, the Forest Hills School for Education, will be July 25th, right back here in this room. And with that, we have a motion for executive session.
Pursuant to the harmonized convention, what's the one, point two, one, the rise of the earth, and that it's something we're hoping to consider. What you have to say, this is a, this is a public debate.
Second. Mr. Froman?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.